Marcus Carrier in the Chamber of Commerce. I want to welcome you all here tonight. Thanks for coming. My name is Leroy Lenobis. I am a teacher at Casa Grande High School. And I've brought a few guests with me from Casa Grande High. Do you all raise your hands? We're following the election here very carefully. We just got started with the semester. And they're all interested in finding out what it's like to hear politicians talk. I told them to listen carefully to how they answer the questions, decide whether or not they actually answered the question. That if they do that, then I don't have to do anything. I also told them to listen for common sense. In my classroom, I have a sign that some of them have seen. Closed minds always run empty. And I want my students, whenever I'm teaching, I want my students to recognize and honor open minds. An open mind has to listen to people. An open mind has to be prepared to look for value in opinions of other people. We have in our national politics and our local politics some elements of closed minds. We've heard about the tax promise, no tax promise. Mr. Norwood's promise for the Republicans. Locally here, we hear things like, "I will never vote for a big box store." I want my students to listen to these candidates and see if they're capable of accepting value on both sides and from every opinion. That's what an open mind is, okay? Before we get started, I'd like to read the... Oh, by the way, students, you all near me? Have you signed up on the list back there? It's on the table, okay? If you see any of your classmates come in, remind them to sign up. Thank you. Now, the candidates have reviewed the rules of the forum in advance. They were sent to them. And by reading them and showing up, they have agreed to abide by those rules. So I'm going to read the rules to you, just so you'll understand what they agreed to do. The seating of the candidates has been settled by numerical lot. There will be no opening statements by candidates. At the conclusion of the question period, each candidate will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. The questioning will commence with the moderator, me, drawing the name of a candidate from a box containing the names of each candidate participating in this forum. The selected candidate will be allowed 60 seconds to answer the question. Thereafter, the moderator will pick the next candidate to answer the same question. This procedure will be followed until all candidates have been selected and afforded an opportunity to answer the question. The moderator will be allowed to comment on whether or not the candidate has in fact answered the question presented to him or her. The moderator will not be allowed to comment on the substance of the answer given by the candidate. In the event of a candidate violating the time rules set forth for the question period, the moderator will instruct the timekeeper to deduct such time from the candidate's closing statement. If a candidate accumulates over one minute of excessive time during the question period, the candidate will not be allowed to give a closing argument or closing statement. Finally, the moderator will read these procedures to the audience, which I've done, okay? So, do we have question number one? Okay. First of all, I would like each of you, starting at this end, just to state your name, so that the members of the audience... I'm sure they all know who you are. State your name, so that the audience knows who you are.
Vice Mayor Tiffany Renee.
Jason Davies.
Gabe Kearney.
Mike Healy.
Kathy Miller.
Alicia K. Harries.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to read the first question. And if you'd like to do this for that. And then I think for the first question, I will just proceed down the line. We have a problem tonight with regards to the microphone. We only have one microphone. And ordinarily, we would have a microphone passed down back and forth on the table. So I talked this over with candidates. And we've all decided it would probably be easiest and more efficient if after I read the question, the candidate come forward and answer the question. Does that make sense?
Yes. Perfect.
Yeah. So here's the first question. What leadership qualities do you possess that set you apart from the other people in this race and make you a good candidate, Ms. Renee?
I don't like podiums. I tend to get hidden behind them. So I want to thank the Marcus Carrier and the Chamber for hosting tonight. And for me, I would say that the leadership qualities that I bring to City Council are important at this time because of the economic challenges that we face. We've had to ask our staff to do quite a bit more with much, much less. And so it's really been about having our staff be able to achieve the needs of the city's services without compromising their ability to provide those services for the city and for the residents. We've had some pretty significant cutbacks within the city, and people are taking on a lot more roles. And so it's really been about having them be able to achieve greatness and do so with those limited resources. So for me, leadership is really expecting quite a bit from those that we are working with.
Thank you, Ms. Davies.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd say one of the top leadership qualities I possess is my background in business. I've been serving as Chair of the Technology Advisory Committee for the last couple of years now. And I've had a chance to demonstrate leadership on the dives in terms of building consensus on issues. My business experience spans around 20 years in the technology industry. I've led teams to develop products. I know how to build consensus. I have experience in using my sense of reason to have a rational approach to policy discussions. And I have a strong commitment to building consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Mr. Kearney.
Thank you all for being here tonight and for watching at home. My name is Gabe Kearney. I've been on the City Council for the past 18 months. Since I've been on the Council, I think I've demonstrated that I am willing to listen to any party or any group in town, hear what they have to say on a given issue, and make my decision based on what the facts are giving to me for what I think is the best decision for Petaluma. Sometimes that decision isn't what I think is in my heart the best thing, but it's what's the best thing for the greater good of the community. And I think that is what sets me apart from the other candidates. I really take my time to listen to what people have to say and take that input into my decision-making process. I love this community, and I've dedicated the past 12 years of my life to serving the community, either on boards, commissions, or the past year and a half on the Council. And so hopefully, after tonight, you'll agree with me that I should be on the Council for four more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Leroy, and thank you for attending here tonight, folks, especially Casa Grande and all the folks who will be watching this on Channel 28 over the future weeks. I'm Mike Healy. I'm finishing my 12th year on the City Council. And I would concur with Abe's comments that you want to be as inclusive and listen to as many people in the community on any issue that you possibly can. And I always welcome input. I have a professional background as both an engineer and as a lawyer, so that gives me a few more tools in the toolkit to look at things, although I try not to be a shadow city attorney or city engineer certainly. But I also regard myself as a political moderate, and I'm close to the center of gravity on our City Council. And I try to engage in conversations with fellow council members without things getting personal and getting a good honest give and take to try to find solutions. So you'll see us with interesting outcomes on votes. And we had one last night that was probably unique.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Ms. Miller.
Hi, I'm Kathy Miller. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And thank everybody who's watching at home on TV. My leadership qualities stem from just a long time, being active in the community for a long time. I have the ability to build consensus. My personal professional background is as a lawyer. And as a lawyer, I spend a lot of time trying to convince people that I'm right. And also, a lot of time listening to other people trying to convince me that they're right. And that gives me an ability to listen to every side of an issue, reach a compromise that works for everybody. And that's an important quality, I think, to have on the City Council as a City Council member, particularly in light of the difficult economic times that we're facing. I'm comfortable from the dais. I'm the former Chair of the Pedaluma Planning Commission. And I just feel like I have the leadership abilities to be a Councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Harries.
Thank you, Alicia K. Harries. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Counsel, pardon me, Commerce, pardon me, and the Marcus Carrier, as well as the Sheraton for hosting this evening. I believe the Sheraton is the only unionized hotel north of the Golden Gate. So that's quite a coup. Beyond that, I stand before you as a candidate running for City Council. And where my leadership comes in is my ability to embrace all voices of the community. And that is reflected in every act that I make as I was certificated Commissioner on the Status of Women, as your Planning Commissioner, and as a community leader. So thank you all so much for coming out and looking for discussing this with you, Gravita.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Now it's time for the second question. The question is, "Traffic congestion continues to be a major concern in Petaluma. Do you see Rainier, the Rainier Cross-Town Connection, as a priority project for the city? If so, what would you do to see that the project is built? If not, why not?" Why don't we start with... Let me have a pen out here. Let's start out with Mr. Davies.
Thank you for the question. Well, as we all know, in fact, I experienced directly on my way here that traffic is getting to be a little bit difficult in the town. And as we approve new projects, we need to ensure that we have proper mitigation in place. Rainier Cross-Town Connector has been something that's been promised for many, many years. And I would love to see it happen. Unfortunately, there really hasn't been an adequate funding mechanism for it. So there was a ballot measure to approve it, and that's great. And a lot of people have promised it over the years, but there hasn't been the funding. What I'm hopeful for is with the new impact fees and potentially borrowing from some other projects, we may see it come to pass. But it will require some Caltrans effort. It probably won't even start till 2020. So it's a long-term solution, and we need to be smart in encouraging alternative transportation, look at other mechanisms to reduce traffic issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Ms. Miller, could you answer that question? I start jumping around, okay?
Yes, I absolutely support the Rainier Overcrossing. I would love to see it built. I've lived in Petaluma for 12 years. And for as long as I can remember, we've been talking about Rainier being built. It seems that it is supported by a vast majority of Petalumans. It certainly needs to be built for traffic congestion purposes. As Mr. Davies said, getting across town is problematic, especially at certain times of the day. But I think in order to get Rainier built, we have to have a City Council that is absolutely in support of getting Rainier built. And I don't think that that has been the case in the past. So I think part of the solution is to get a City Council in place that really wants to get Rainier built and seeks actively the funding to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Renee, could you answer that question?
Thank you. This is a great question. Since I've been on Council, this current Council has been moving Rainier forward. And it's been an exciting time and a challenging time because of the funding models that we've been relying on have been shifting and changing. We've had redevelopment funds that we've had to fight for to protect some of the projects that will help move Rainier forward. And those are in challenge right now. But we've worked to set our impact fees as a backup source should we not be successful with the state. It continues to be a challenge because most of the impact of traffic is going to come before Rainier Cross-Town Connector actually gets built. So we're going to continue to see more congestion before the relief actually comes. It is dependent on developer dollars and impact fees to pay for it. And as long as we continue to have a funding mechanism that is warranted within our general plan, if we start to lose track of that funding, it will be a challenge of the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Healy, could you answer that question?
Yes, I'm a strong supporter of the Rainier Project. I actually wrote the ballot measure several years ago that got 70-plus percent voter support. And I think right now, we're actually closer than we have ever been to getting the first phase of the Rainier Project built. I went to Sacramento with city staff a few weeks ago to defend our redevelopment dollars. You'll be hearing more news about that within the next week or two. But it's very important that we save the $7.5 million that's there with the undercrossing and the other $12 million. And that will allow us to use the $12 million in impact fees from both the Deer Creek and Target Projects and target them towards the Rainier Project. With Deer Creek Project, we're getting some of the land we need for the Rainier Project. I'm trying to secure even more of the land we need for the ultimate Rainier Project. And I really don't think there's any reason to think it's going to take till 2020 for Caltrans to get that stretch of freeway wide. And I'm hopeful that they will be able to continue and do that sooner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Ms. Harries.
The way that I feel about Rainier is that it's been on the docket since 1965. No council has ever made Rainier a priority. So from my standpoint, we need to change that conversation because we're looking at a project that lowest estimates are upwards of $100 million. So given that they didn't do it in 1965, what makes us think in 2012 that that is actually going to occur? So while I echo the sentiments of the widening of one of mine, my understanding it won't occur until 2020, I don't believe we need to continue the Rainier conversation. We have to change that to one that is achievable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Mr. Kearney.
So as has been stated, Rainier is a project that is older than myself and older than half of the audience here tonight. But I disagree with some of the other candidates in the idea that it's not a priority for the current Council. The current Council has directed staff to be board with the project and has dedicated more money to this project than any other Council before it. And so to say that we are not moving forward and we're not trying to get this project done at the current time is not accurate. And so I think that the accurate thing is we've dedicated money towards this. We're fighting to keep that money there for this project. And we want to see it completed so we can see traffic congestion relieved to the city of Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Now we have question number three. As a Council member, what would you do to tackle the problem of repairing the city streets? Mr. Healy.
The fundamental problem with streets is like having the funding to go after them. It's about as simple as that. And the funding that we do spend on streets is the funding that we're required to spend on streets. And given where the general fund budget is, it's going to reduce from $47 to $31, $32 million a year. We reduce services across the board. So what you need to do is, I think you need to grow the economies, to increase revenues. And you have to look at specific opportunities to earmark certain funds for street repairs. One opportunity, the first one we'll have coming up, is an opportunity to extend the garbage franchise for several additional years at no cost to... No additional cost to ratepayers. And that would, with the offer on the table, give us an extra $500,000 every year to put in discreet repair. And that's the kind of long-term funding source that will start to make a difference over time.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Mr. Davies.
Thanks, Gabe, for the question. Well, as many of you know, the roads are in bad shape. I think at one point, we were done with the model capital of the world, which I think was certainly an exaggeration. But I think all of you would probably like to see better streets. Let's show a hand for that. Everyone wants better streets. So the question isn't desire. The question is how we do it. And as someone with a lot of business experience, I know exactly what it takes to attract more business to Petaluma. I'm pleased to see that we've made some good strides in modifying the impact fees, helping to retain, expand, and attract more business. Ultimately, that's where we're going to get the funding for our road repairs. And I would echo the statement from Mr. Healy. I do think that we should look at the garbage franchise fees as a direct way to offset their impacts and fund our road repairs. So that's one solution. But I would turn every stone to raise revenues for the city, being very proactive, and I think much more so than previous councils have been. Thanks.
Back to Mr. Davies. Ms. Renee, could you answer that question?
Thank you. Certainly, the garbage impact fee is going to be essential to finding current revenue. We also have to stop the bleeding that's been happening in our community around property values. As we shore up our property values, we can see an increase in revenues from that as well. I actually took the leadership to get our staff to tell us what the actual costs that we are deferring every year. And so now we have a number that we need to work towards. In addition to dealing with the revenues to be able to repair our streets, we need to really focus on what will make them last longer. And so reducing wear and tear by helping parents and students get off the roads every day, that's 30% of our wear and tear during the school year, can significantly reduce the longevity of our roads. And so by getting students into buses, on bikes, through safe walking, we can really reduce the impact that we have on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Ms. Miller.
I agree with Mr. Healy and Mr. Davies that the garbage franchise fee is a good starting place that has the ability to generate an additional $500,000 a year. That money needs to go to street and road maintenance. There is also a possibility of others are liable to it to some sort of a special tax for street and road maintenance. And we can also, long-term, look at extending Measure M, which is due to expire in 2024, but you could extend it another 10 years and dedicate some of that money to street and road maintenance locally as well. So those are the solutions that I would consider proposing as a means of funding street repairs in Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. How about you, Ms. Harries?
Currently, we have several projects going on in the city of Petaluma. And I believe a lot of those are funded with grants. So while I agree with candidate Davies that we need to increase the businesses coming to our community so that we can start to drive more of a tax base, we also need to look at secure funding sources. And that can be achieved by working with our regional, and our state, and our federal officials to ensure that we get grant funding.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
In order for us to properly maintain our roads, we need to spend millions and millions of dollars every year, millions of dollars that we don't have currently in our general fund. As you've heard from the other candidates, we've lost money coming to the general fund because we've seen a decrease in the businesses operating here in Petaluma. We've made efforts on this current Council to lower the linkage fees to bring more businesses here into town. We were successful in doing that. We've lowered the impact fees, which will help more businesses come to town, which will increase the revenue coming to the city, which will help us. Some of the other ideas that some of the candidates have indicated was trying to get more people onto buses. One of the proposals I had on the Transportation Committee was to reduce the cost of a bus pass for those students that are low income or eligible for free reduced lunch. This was an idea that they had in San Francisco. They were unable to pass it. We passed it here, and now as a result, we have more people riding the buses than ever before. That is helping to alleviate the problems we have on our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. It's time for question number four. How well do you think the city is implementing its economic development strategy? And what specific policies or programs do you pursue to strengthen Petaluma's economy, job-creating ability, and business growth? Mr. Kearney.
Could have just let you stand up here. So when we look at the different areas of our community that were identified in the economic strategic plan that were missing in the community, we've already made steps with the approval of Deer Creek to bring those businesses here to town. When we look at the businesses that we want to attract, want to attract a diverse grouping of businesses so that if we ever see an incident, like the telecom bubble popping again here in Petaluma, we won't be hit with such a drastic loss of revenue and loss of employers here in town. So making sure that we have a diversified workforce coming into town, having our Economic Development Director working with the businesses that are not only here in town that want to expand, but working with the businesses that might not be here, that are looking to move here, I think is incredibly important to making sure that we have more businesses coming to town and we're getting more revenue into the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. It's okay for you to sit down now. Ms. Harries, could you answer that question?
Economic development, to me, looks like bringing in jobs such as healthcare and also high tech. I've worked at a company in Marin County that has grown in the past six and a half years from 350 to over 1,000 people. Sadly, we relocated more than half of our workforce down to San Rafael. I would have loved to have seen them come north. But nonetheless, those are the kind of job opportunities I like to have. We've got a living wage. We've got benefits. We've got the ability for affordable homeownership, which by default just encourages people to root into our community, and it all becomes cyclical. And to that end, tourism, I think we just have this vital natural resource that we really, really need to expand on. And that is our downtown city of Petaluma and our river.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. How about you, Ms. Miller?
I think the city is doing a good job of implementing an economic development strategy. I think the hiring of an economic... I think the hiring of an economic development person has done a tremendous amount of good. I think she's doing a great job bringing jobs into our community. And I am, I'm glad that we hired her. I think that we're also doing a good job with filling some of our needs by the Deer Creek development, as well as the Regency development. And that will certainly increase our tax revenues. If we need to continue to recruit businesses into Petaluma, they're again increasing our revenues and restoring money to our general fund. Those are the mechanisms that I would, that I would continue to advocate in terms of generating increased economic development in Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renee.
It's been an exciting time to have our economic development director come on board. I was one of the small businesses and a council member that really took an active role in the workshops and was very excited to see that implemented through our economic development manager. She's been able to work with our businesses to address the issues that may have kept them from leaving if they hadn't been addressed. And that's been a very good thing for Petaluma. She's been able to recognize some of the policies that need changing, and we've adopted changes to those policies. Additionally, the best thing that government can do to help spur economic growth is to deal with our infrastructure needs. And so I've been very active on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority to bring many millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to the area and fighting to keep those dollars to bring projects moving forward along the 101 corridor, as well as transportation here in the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Healy.
The approval of the Target Center and the Freedman's Center, both of which I voted for, and both of which were split votes and quite controversial on the City Council, were a huge step forward. But that also allows us to pivot and change focus, because I think now at this point, we've got the big box category, the leakage that was represented, sales tax leakage fixed, and now we can focus more on organic growth, internal growth, and getting local companies to grow and expand and create good quality jobs. I think the reduction in impact fees was essential. And there are aspects, it was the signature thing, it's a twenty-eight percent overall reduction, but the fact that we're giving redeveloped properties credit for the space they had there before really encourages redevelopment of buildings that have languished. I agree with Ms. Miller regarding the economic development director position. That's an important outreach position for retaining and growing and attracting businesses to town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Mr. Davies.
Thank you for the question. Well, I'm highly supportive of our economic development strategy. I was very excited when it was passed unanimously. And I'm also pleased to see that we've got, with some new retail projects approved, we can now move towards focus on business retention, expansion, and attraction. I'm pleased to say that I've taken a very active role from my position as chair on the Technology Advisory Committee for implementing some of the very changes that are recommended by the Economic Strategic Plan, including updating our website to make it easier for businesses to navigate. I'm pleased that we've done things to streamline the permitting process. We have seven major clusters, business clusters in Petaluma. And the top ones we need to focus on for improving the economic climate, in my view, are the technology sector and health and all this, and food and beverage processing. Those are the leading revenue sources for the city for creating jobs, which go right back into city coffers so that we can fund all our city services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. The next question is, do you agree or disagree with the city's approval of the Target or East Washington Place Shopping Center? And the approval of Freedman's or Deer Creek Village Shopping Center? Why do you either agree or disagree with the city's decision? Ms. Renee.
Great question. I actually voted against both of those projects. First one I voted against because of the impacts to our own facilities. We did not go far enough in addressing the impacts to our swim center. And I think that when we're taking on projects, we shouldn't be devaluing our own current public investments. So I had a real problem with that, as well as the amount of traffic that it's going to create without the real mitigations in place, like Old Redwood Highway, as well as the Brumier Across Town Connector. So, you know, those are chicken and egg questions, but it's going to cause more challenges to the city before we see the relief. In addition, with Deer Creek, I worked very hard to bring Freedman's to that project because I felt that if we were going to have a project like that, we should be bringing in quality jobs. That was another issue that I took with the Target coming to town. We've continued to see a decline in the middle-class jobs, and that's a place where we need to change.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Healy, could you answer that question?
Leroy, you wanted to contrast there. I supported both the Target Center and the Freedman's Center. With respect to the Target Center, not only are they funding substantial upgrades to our swim center, they also paid for a new field, a new set of fields for National Little League at Petaluma Junior High School. And we all know how that turned out for those guys in their first year at that facility. Freedman's, I think, was a great addition, some substitution for Lowe's, which was the original master tenant for that site. The community is very excited about both of these things coming here. And, you know, I can't claim to be a cassegrad like Mr. Kearney, but every time I go and speak to the government classes there, I always ask the question, you know, can I have a show of hands, how many of your families have gone shopping at Target in either Novato or Rutter Park in the last thirty days? And I always get almost any hand with a show of hands. So the community is really looking forward to this and not having continually leakage of sales tax dollars. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Mr. Kearney.
So I'll start with the Deer Creek Center. I voted for it numerous times. And I think the last time I voted for it was at the Planning Commission, we were looking at the final site plan and architectural review. We listened to the concerns of the neighborhood and got all of the concerns in the neighborhood factored into the project and added on as mitigation. So we can see that project go forward with lowering the mitigations to neighbors. We're going to see a good company return to Petaluma that was founded here in Petaluma. And I think that's important to see. Additionally, we'll see healthcare, which has been mentioned by some of the other candidates as one of the areas that we're lacking in. We'll see healthcare coming into that and fitness. And so I think those are both important things, to have a diverse shopping center there. With Target, we have a lot of people in this audience that have gone to Target in the past thirty days. We also have a lot of people in the audience that are athletes, who have to drive all the way to Santa Rosa to get uniform equipment for their sports. Having the sporting goods at that shopping center will be helpful to keep those tax dollars here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Davies, could you answer that question?
Well, like a lot of the candidates, thank you for the question. I'm pleased to see Freedman's coming to town. It's great business, and I know of a lot of contractors that would be quite happy that they don't have to get in a car and drive so far. And as a homeowner, I can say that I'll appreciate not having to pay more to have my contractor go out and get drywall or whatnot or lumber. So I'm supportive of that. I did think there was merit to an environmentally superior alternative with a skilled nursing center. I think that was something that would have been interesting to look for, but I know that that, I guess, was not achievable by the current council. As far as the Regency project, what can I say? My wife shops at Target. I'm, you know, pleased that we will make it easier for, now she just came in, my kids, it'll be easier for her to shop. I do want to make sure that we are very proactive in making up for the predicted twelve percent loss in some of the existing businesses. And that's where my business experience in helping to retain, attract, and expand business proactively will be key.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Ms. Harries.
Well, I'll start with Deer Creek and just mention that I am highly supportive of Freedman's coming to our neighborhood. But I was unable to support a recent decision by the Planning Commission in terms of the site and architectural review, as well as the environmental impact report that came before us. And the reason is, is that I believe we are not mitigating traffic, and we are increasing downstream floodplain problems, and we're not mitigating any of those problems. And so in terms of additional development in that area, I'd like to see us do mixed use. And we had the opportunity, as candidate Davies just stated, we could have done Freedman's as well as assisted living facility. I'd like to see opportunities that represent what we have downtown theater score, that's called mixed use, live, work, and you get to play all in all. And in terms of East Washington Place, I was unable to vote on that project as a planning commissioner due to the fact that I did sign a petition in 2007 advocating for responsible development in our community, which ties right back into what our general plan calls for, and that is mixed use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Ms. Miller.
I agree with the approvals of both the Deer Creek and the Regency Center. I was on the Planning Commission when we were revising the general plan, and we held multiple public hearings on land use during the course of that process. And those parcels are designated mixed use, and mixed use is defined in the general plan as a mix of residential, retail, and office. And it's an and/or designation, it's not required to have all three. And the reason that it was left that way is so that there was flexibility when you looked at a specific project or a specific parcel as to how that parcel should be treated. And Deer Creek doesn't need a residential component in it because of its proximity to the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Now we have our sixth question. What is your opinion about the possibility of a casino being constructed south of town? If you oppose such a project, what steps would you take as a council member to prevent it from being built? If you support it, what is the basis of your support? And we will, how about you, Ms. Harries?
It is my understanding that we won't see anything occur in that specific area until 2016. And I do believe it's out of our jurisdiction, and that falls within the Board of Supervisors. So I'm hoping that we do work with Supervisor Rabbit and the rest of the Board of Supervisors to have ongoing dialogue to address traffic problems as well as potential flooding issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Ms. Miller, what's your opinion?
I don't want to see a casino built south of town. The reality of it is that there is no sewer or water hookup to that parcel of property. So as sort of a means of preventing that from occurring, I would suggest that we maybe incentivize them not to develop a casino by offering to provide water and sewer hookups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Davies, could you answer the question?
Thank you for the question. Well, I would reach out to Harvey Hopkins, who's the chief, and I would ensure that we work with him proactively, try to find out a little bit more about what they're interested in doing. My understanding is they're not so eager to build a casino necessarily, but they want to diversify their holdings and develop all fields, possibly a motel, possibly housing, wetlands mitigation of that site. It might be possible to incentivize them to commit to that. And I would suggest that we reach out proactively very soon, because they have elections every two years. So while we have someone who could be a willing partner, we should be very positive in reaching out, without the assumptions that it's going to have to lead to something like the Stop 101 effort. So I'm not in favor of the casino there, and I think we can be positive and proactive to ensure that this doesn't happen. The one issue would be with respect to the urban growth boundary, getting water from Petaluma there could be a concern, so we have to look at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Mr. Kearney, could you answer the question?
So Leroy, could you remind me what the question was? Was it, am I in favor of a casino south of town?
Let me reread it.
Thank you.
Do you want to sit down?
It's okay.
What is your opinion about the possibility of a casino being constructed south of town? If you oppose such a project, what steps would you take as a council member to prevent it from being built? If you support it, what is the basis of your support?
I do not support the casino south of town. I don't support a casino north of town. What I will do to make sure that doesn't happen is to make sure I work with all of the elected officials in the area, both at the county, the state, and the federal level to oppose this at every step of the way. Since I've been on the council, I've traveled twice to DC on my own dime, the city, and paid a penny for it, to advocate for issues directly relating to the city of Petaluma, to make sure we get funding to finish up our flood project. If that's what it takes for me to make sure that this casino doesn't happen, that's what I will do. I will make sure I work with the elected officials in the area to oppose this project and make sure it doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Ms. Renee, please.
Thank you. I think it's very important to work with the tribe, to incentivize and encourage them to look at how they can really create new opportunities for revenue within their tribal council. The casino shopping has been a problem that's existed as casinos are moving more and more south. I saw this as an issue several years ago, and I've met with county council and other advocacy groups for the River area to try to ensure that we can provide other options for them and have an open dialogue with the tribe, really recognizing the tribe as an important piece to having negotiations and moving forward in positive ways. So I'm really willing to do that, and I think that I have a great background to really recognize and respect that culture in a way that will be beneficial for the city and look forward to providing other opportunities, economic opportunities, for the tribe.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Healy.
Yeah, thank you. I actually wrote the advisory ballot measure several years ago, that got seventy-nine percent of Petaluma voters to say that they opposed the casino that location. And so I'm trying to carry out with all the voters. It's a tricky situation. That site was purchased by the same band that owns the River Rock Casino, and they bought it because they felt there was a competitive threat to that casino, the Rutter Park Casino. So it's this weird little thing going on. I do support working with the tribe up there, down there. One of the things we need to do in the meantime is, yeah, the water service in that part of Petaluma, all of our south, is actually provided by North Marin Water District for quirky reasons, and they want to give it to us, and we should take it over because it puts us in a more advantageous position to negotiate. So I'd say that. But in terms of negotiating, it's a very tricky site, because not only do you have the urban growth boundary to contend with, you also have the voter-approved county-wide urban separator, and that's one of the issues also in the neutral lawsuit, so it's equally important with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. The seventh question of the evening is as follows. The city is facing severe budgetary shortfalls that have significantly eroded city services. What policies or programs, including tax increases, do you favor to raise additional revenues? What specific expense reductions do you support to ensure Petaluma's, Petaluma can ensure adequate service for its residents? Mr. Kearney.
Currently, our residents are facing some of the slimmest services that we've seen in our city's history. Currently, we're almost down thirty staff members in our police department. We only have twelve paramedics working for our fire department. And we have folks that are filling pot holes and also doing park maintenance, double duty. We're already in a tough, tough place, and there's not much room for us to cut. I actually don't see that there's anywhere for us to cut. So what we need to do is make sure we continue to work to bring more revenue into the city of Petaluma. If a sales tax were the option, I'd If a sales tax were the option, I think that we need to look at going out and doing the research to see if we have the support, how we can get that support, get our allies with our city unions to get behind us on that and work to put that on the ballot in a thoughtful and thought-out way. Rushing it last minute is not going to get it passed and is not going to get the support that we need like Measure X has in the community. The people that are behind Measure X have done the work, they've done the studies, and they have their boots on the ground, and that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Healy.
Yeah, Councilmember Kearney, I actually made some good points there. Our budget has gone from $47 million a year to $32.5 million a year, and there have been substantial reductions in personnel, so we have, I think, unsustainably low service levels in a variety of areas, streetlights, streets, park maintenance. We currently have $0 for funding or replacement of fire trucks, which is not a place you want to be for long. I do think with Target and Freedom Centers coming online, we're not going to go any lower, and the question is how do you grow the economy after that? Those will probably only bring, you know, between $2 and $4 million a year to the city, which is nice, but it doesn't restore you to where you were. And so I do think we can look at a sales tax measure in the future like other cities in the region have done. The one this time, I will admit, was a little bit last minute just to see if there was a chance. We clearly have more trust building to do with different constituencies if that's going to be successful down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Ms. Harries.
Given that I am not a city council member, I am not entirely clear of the overall aspect of the budget, but what I can speak to is that I am aware we are operating at minimum thresholds in this city. It's challenging for not only residents, but of course employees as well. So in terms of a tax measure, I think we have to be very, very careful. I am highly supportive of Measure X, but we also have to look at the overall impacts of the sales tax to our community, and we need to be engaging our community at large to ensure that is something that they can sustain. And again, going back to, I think we can easily increase tourism in this community and begin to generate additional revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Ms. Miller.
I don't think that there's really any more room to be cut from our budget. As Councilmember Healy and Kearney said, we are at unsustainably low levels. We have multiple frozen and unfilled police officer positions. Our fire stations need to be upgraded. We are going to need new fire trucks. We just can't sustain where we are. The good news is that we will start seeing tax revenue from the Target Center and Regency Center, and I think that that's important. We also need to continue to attract businesses, to increase revenue here in town so that we can restore some of the services, get our parks wrecked, back up to speed, maintain our roads, streetlights, all of those things. I'm a founding member of the Petaluma Friends of Recreation, so I'm a big supporter of Measure X, and I think that Measure X will also bring revenue. If it's passed, it'll bring revenue into the city in the form of increased tourism and user peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Renee.
I have been a big proponent of building a couple of more hotels. We currently are at capacity on many weekends where we have events in Southern County, and by building more hotels, we can really see a good impact to our general fund, getting more heads in beds, increasing our transit occupancy tax, and that money can funnel straight into our general fund. Additionally, with that additional tourism that we can bring to town, we'll see more sales tax infusion into the downtown, which is going to be very vital to the downtown as they are facing the opening of the Target Center. As Jason Davies had said, we're looking at a pretty significant cut to local businesses, so we want to be able to stay that off in new niche ways. I did bring forward the sales tax concept. We do need to revisit it in one way or another. We're also going to need to address our stormwater maintenance utility, so looking at a way to do that that can also address neighborhood preservation will be key, and I have fought for keeping services like three police officers from being cut in the past as well.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Davies.
We've got a lot of work to do. With the revenues needing enhancement, again, we need to focus on business retention, expansion, and attraction. As far as other ways that we could generate revenue, because I do agree with some of the comments made, that it's hard to make more cuts, although I will turn every stone to see if more cuts can be made. I think the pension measures are a good step. Obviously, I would look at collective bargaining if there needs to be some more negotiation in that regard. As far as possible opportunities, I think the fairground development is still an opportunity that we should look at in terms of development. I also think that we should look at getting some money for our wastewater that we're currently paying to have put elsewhere. That's a commodity that I think has value, and I think that we should look at the potential of auctioning that as a way to generate revenue. But cheaply, auto sales and property taxes are the biggest generators of revenue for the city, so we need to work at those. I'm glad to see that we have the auto extension drive. I'd be supportive of a Fiat and Alfa Romeo dealership coming. So I think there's a lot of things we can do in that regard to increase revenues. I'll be working on that if I'm lucky to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Now we come to question number eight. As a council member, what would you do to control the city's rising pension costs? Mr. Healy.
Pensions are obviously a huge issue these days. I don't think there's a single magic bullet response to that issue, and I think it's going to be processed, and we're engaged in for an extended period of time. We have recently come to agreements with our two public safety, or with our public safety bargaining units, and we'll have a second tier for new hires in place shortly, and we're on the cusp of doing that with our other employees as well. I expect that situation to continue to evolve over years as we see what Sacramento does, as we see what the courts do, as we see what our neighboring jurisdictions do, and as we see what the financial markets do in terms of how our pension plans are funded. So this is not the end of the story. It's the beginning of a journey, and it's a serious issue, and we will be dealing with it.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Ms. Renee.
I would say pension costs have been probably one of the more challenging aspects of our budget in recent years. As we continue to strive to keep our social contracts with our employees, providing those living wages and a healthy outcome for them at the end of their career, we are seeing cuts to services, and so it's really been about, for me, asking for leadership from our unions and our units to come forward and come up with solutions to help reduce those pension costs. It's important that we look at pension spiking and putting on caps for when they go to retire, that they have a three-year cap instead of being able to put all of that on one year and spiking their pension at the end of the day. There are many things coming forward with the new state reform, and we're going to be pretty much forced to go back to the bargaining table and look at these issues. Not all of the information is in yet, but it is certainly going to be forced upon all of us to come back to the table and work towards those solutions.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Kearney.
So as was mentioned, we did negotiate for a second tier with some of our bargaining units here in town, and then today at 12:30 in LA, the governor signed into law a pension reform. Those pension reforms are going to go into place, and we're going to have to go back and negotiate with our employees to make sure that works here in the city of Petaluma. But it's not our city employees and the public employees that got us into the situation we're in now. So to try and pit all of the blame on them is not really fair or accurate. Our public firefighters and cops did not foreclose on people's homes. They did not crash our stock market, and they did not get us into the situation we're in as far as the revenue and the budget situation we have. So we need to work together with them as we have currently been doing and keep moving forward as a city to make sure we have the best outcome for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Ms. Harries.
I am prepared to have fair and balanced pension reform discussions. I'm really pleased that we have moved to two-tier. I'm not suggesting that we take anything away from current employees, but what I do know is we have to continue the dialogue, and what's most important to me is that we're ensuring that we have funding on the back end in terms of the pension promises that we're making today so that 30 years down the road, they can actually pay it out. So again, just circling back, I think it's imperative that we continue the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Mr. Davies.
Well, I'm a strong advocate for pension reform. I was pleased when the city was able to get a two-tier system going through collective bargaining. I am also pleased with the state measure. At the same time, you know, I do agree in keeping promises, and I also agree in shared sacrifice. And in the private sector, many companies have employees that have not had salary increases that have done without or are unemployed. That's very difficult. I'm not advocating greater cuts, but we all do have to pull together to make sure that we can function as a city. So again, I would look forward to negotiating through collective bargaining and ensure that things are more sustainable as we grow.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Ms. Miller.
Pension reform is a very complicated issue, and it's something that has to be addressed at the state, county, and city level. I'm pleased that the state is moving forward with pension reform. I'm very pleased that the city has instituted a second tier for new hires for the public safety officers. I think it, I know they're working on a second tier with respect to certain other city employees, and I think that's a step in the right direction, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Now for the ninth question, the penultimate question. Petaluma Friends of Recreation parcel tax on the November ballot would fund a variety of needed park improvements. If the parcel tax doesn't pass, how would you propose creating more playing fields and/or maintaining current parks given the city's current budget crisis? Ms. Harries.
As I previously stated, I am an early supporter of P4 Measure X. I don't believe it will not succeed, but in the event that we are unable to pass that measure, I believe it's an opportunity for us to engage our schools and our park users and begin maintenance programs involving the entire community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Ms. Miller.
Okay, so this is where I probably am going to go over on my time thing because I could talk for, oh, I don't know, 30 minutes about parks in red in Petaluma. Measure X is just a huge opportunity for the community. I'm an early supporter of it. I'm a founding member of the Petaluma Friends of Recreation. I was one of those people out at the farmers' markets and at the baseball fields and the soccer fields bugging you to sign my petition. I don't even want to think about what's going to happen if it doesn't pass. Measure X has components in it for every single person in town, and it's critical for us to pass this. Right now, we have four people maintaining all the parks in town. It's not enough, and there's no money in the budget for more. So we really have to pass Measure X. If we don't, I don't know what we're going to do. I think we're going to see a lot of parks that don't get maintained because unless we really increase revenue in town, we're not going to get the maintenance that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Davies.
Well, as a parent of two children enrolled in public school, I can tell you that I am strongly supportive of P4. At the same time, I have heard from some businesses in the community that have some concerns, and that concerns me, and I want to ensure that we've got support there. So I think it's very important for us to reach out to the businesses that have concerns and see how we can work with them to get that support. I think it's going to be critical. Times are tight for everyone, and this is a great cause. I'm behind it, but it's hard to ask for money when some people are looking at multiple parcels that they have to be paying for. So I know that at least one business has concerns for that. I know some others, but I want to work with her and others, I should say, to make sure that she can be supportive. If it doesn't pass, we need to be very, very proactive in moving forward with the economic development strategy and doing more business expansion, retention, and attraction, and I have some key skills to apply to doing that. We should also work with the people that supported it. They obviously are supportive. There might be some other approaches we can entertain. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Ms. Renee.
Sorry about that. We are in an exciting time, I think, for this measure. We've had a great windfall with the Petaluma National Little League success. We currently don't have the larger fields for a team like that to move on into the next levels, and so by bringing East Washington Place on board and helping to fund those future phases, we can really see some movement there. I think people are really excited about that and should know more about that. With all the people that came out for the parade and were out supporting our Little League, I think that the awareness of the issue is even greater now, and so being able to capitalize on that is really important. Should it not pass, which I don't think it will fail, we can look at other ways to work with our neighborhoods, to look at maybe landscaping and lighting districts that also take on park maintenance as well, and I think that's something that would really engage neighborhoods in ownership of their local parks.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mr. Healy.
I'm going to differ with some of the other candidates on this one. The question is, how do we deliver the parks and playing fields and other amenities that Measure X will provide if it fails? And I think the realistic measure is that there is no Plan B. If Measure X fails, we're not going to get those amenities, and I think there's a message that people need to understand. Our general fund, again, you've heard all the candidates say we want to grow the economy, get more sales tax revenue, get higher-paying jobs growing in town, but that growth is going to be grabbed and dedicated to the critical services that are supported by the general fund, police, fires, streets. Again, if the community really wants these amenities that Measure X will provide, and I hope they do, and I endorsed it, and I signed the petition, they need to vote for Measure X because there is no Plan B.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Mr. Kearney.
So as I said before, I love this community. I loved growing up here and playing on all the ballfields that we have here. I was fortunate enough to play for Petaluma National Little League, played for American. But I played on some of the great parks we have here that have... But I played on some of the great parks we have here that have deteriorated over the years. We're talking about $52 a year, right, or a month? It's not a lot. It's a year. It's a year, sorry. It's a year. That's not a lot per parcel. $52 a year is not a lot of money. Last night, I was proud to vote to support this and have the Democratic Party endorse this. I will, as I walk door to door in our community, asking people to vote for me, I will ask them to vote for this. And I think that's what we need to focus on. I've already been doing the work that's needed to make sure that we have revenue coming in into our city, and I want to continue to do that work, but it's not enough. We do need Measure X. It's an absolute, and we can't afford to not vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. We come now sadly to the last question. My favorite question. The question that ties into the remarks I made at the beginning. The question is, "Politics is the art of compromise. If elected, how do you plan to practice this art? How would you work with your fellow council members and the city manager to accomplish the city's goals?" Why don't we start with Mr. Davies?
Well, as the Rolling Stones once said, "You can't always get what you want." And that is something that we all have to keep in mind when we're working in any capacity. You can't be so locked into a position that you're not willing to see the other perspective and the other view. I've had to demonstrate that and have lived by that in my experience in business. When I lived overseas, you're working with all kinds of people from different cultures and backgrounds with different ways of looking at the world, and it's important to listen, and it's important to work as a team and build consensus. And that's the kind of leadership that I hope to bring to the city council, should I be honored to serve. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Ms. Renee.
I grew up in a very diverse family, both culturally and politically. And so I've spent most of my life sitting at the kitchen table, talking and listening around political concepts, and really have brought that to my work here at the city council. I think that, you know, in the past, we've had a lot of division, and I think that we've seen those changes occurring in this last few years, where we're really, you know, unsure of where people sit necessarily because of that ability to compromise. And I think it makes sometimes for a messy council, where you have to really work through issues at the dais, but it also makes for an open and transparent process. And I think if there's been anything to be gained by that, it's that we have had a more open dialogue on council. So, you know, I've gained the ability to listen and the ability to argue, and a lot of leadership and knowledge around what's happening here in the county. So I look forward to continuing to serve in that respect and ask for your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Ms. Miller.
I think that the most important thing is to be able to listen to everybody's point of view and understand everybody's point of view. And I feel like my professional background as a lawyer gives me the ability to do that. I am used to seeing things from all different angles. I have the ability to agree, to disagree, to disagree without being disagreeable, which I think is very important. And so I think that the big thing is you have to be able to listen to what everybody thinks. You have to be able to process that information, and then you have to reach a decision that is the best decision for the community, for all of the community. And compromise is the big thing, and being willing to listen to other people's opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Harries, could you answer that question?
I echo the sentiments of the other candidates. Open communication, ongoing dialogue is imperative, and the realization of the challenging role that our city manager has to play, and he serves at the pleasure of the city council. And that's challenging. But the bottom line is, we're here to learn, and we're here to listen, and I think it's imperative that we do that, and we be mindful and respectful of our different opinions and move our community forward in a way that is beneficial to the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harries. Mr. Kearney.
It's one thing to, during the campaign season, say you're going to work with your other colleagues out there, and it's not going to do it. And for the past 18 months, I have been doing it. I have been working with the other members of the city council on different issues. And at the end of the night, if we agree or disagree, we can still get along and talk about the different issues outside of council that we agree on. We all share a passion for making sure that this community is a great place to live. No one can deny that. We just have a different roadmap of how we want to get there. I think I've proven that I can work with other members of the council. I can disagree with them without being disagreeable. And when it comes time to vote on issues, I'll listen to both sides and make the decision based on what I think is best for the community and what's going to make sure that the city of Petaluma keeps moving forward. I think I've done it, and I want to keep doing it for the next four years, and hopefully you'll vote for me and keep me on the council. Thank you.
Mr. Healy. Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Healy.
I haven't counted, but I've probably served with 20 or 25 different individual council members over the last 12 years that I've been on the city council. And the common denominator among every single one of them is that they all love this community. And that goes for all the candidates here tonight, and that's why we're running. We do have different views on how to get things. What I've found to be the most effective council members are the ones who are willing to engage in an honest give and take, and the ones who are confident enough in their own skill set, their own knowledge, to engage in a real, honest discussion about, well, if we change this or change that, does that address your concern? And that's a skill set that not all council members have, because we've had way too many, and I'm not talking about present company here, who just, their idea of a discussion is to state their position, and then when it gets back to them, to restate their position more forcefully. And that really doesn't make for good council dynamics. So you want to look for people who are willing to engage in a real, honest conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Thank you, everybody. It's time now for the concluding remarks. It's one minute per person. Let me ask the timekeepers. Have any of these candidates, under the passion of the moment, exceeded their time limit? All right, then you all have a full one minute. What I'd like to do... Being generous. Wow. I can barely say my name in one minute. I think what I'd like to do, rather than keep popping up here, we'll start at this end with Ms. Renee. She won the lottery, being number one, and we'll just proceed.
But I'll go first.
Okay. Should we talk about that? Can we reach a compromise?
I'm fine. She can go first.
We can go with you.
Oh, no, please.
Okay. Then we'll just, rather than be popping up and inviting somebody, we'll just proceed down the dais. Does that work for everybody? All right, thank you.
Thank you all again for coming out tonight. It's great to see so many faces here and out in TV land as well. I am really excited to be running for city council again, because it's been such an honor to be serving this community over the last four years. I was the first Latina elected to the city council, first Latina vice mayor, and I bring with me a background that's been rather difficult. I was on my own at 16. I lost my father at 17 to a tragic murder. I was a mother of two and single at 19, and had to put myself through school and really fought along the way to continue to move my life forward. And so I bring, I think, an exceptional set of skills and tools to be able to help move this city forward, as well as the compassion and the empathy to understand what people are going through and the challenges that they're facing during these difficult times. So I bring this set of skills to fight for my community, because I think this is an awesome place to be, and look forward to serving you for another four years. Thank you, and thank you for your vote.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, the Argus, for your engagement for commerce. This has been a great evening, and it's great to see so many people here. I'm running for city council to bring fresh, new leadership with a focus on business expansion, retention, and attraction, the key areas of the economic development plan that we need to focus on. I'm a father. I've been married for about 15 years. Be in October, it'll be a 15-year anniversary. I've got two children here. I have a stake in this community. I'm a native of California. I understand the culture, and I love Petaluma, and I know that we can protect it. We can grow our economy while not harming our environment, and I believe I can bring the right balance and skill set that's sorely needed on the council. I ask for your vote, and I hope that I'm honored to serve. Thank you very much.
14 years ago, I sat watching a Petaluma City Council meeting at my parents' house, and they were talking about domestic partner benefit rights for the city of Petaluma. And I heard some negative things being said, and I got in my car, and I went down to City Hall, and I got up and spoke. And I've been following Petaluma politics ever since. That was 14 years ago. I'm passionate about our community. I want to work hard for our community. Over the past 18 months while sitting on the council, I think I've proven that, and I think that I've earned your vote for four more years. I ask you for it, and hopefully after tonight, you see that I have the vision, the leadership skills, and the experience to keep working to move Petaluma forward. Thank you very much.
So in my 12 years on the city council and working with the community, we've accomplished a lot of good things. We've revitalized downtown. We have the core of Engineer Flood Fix almost complete. We passed the advisory measure for the Renee project. We've now approved Target and Freedman's. There's a lot that we have left to do, and I want to make real progress on getting Renee actually achieved for the community, and I think we're on the cusp of doing that. I want to help revitalize our economy and get good jobs, now that we can pivot off of the big-box debate and start focusing on other things here in town. People wonder, you know, ask me, "Ariane, that's why do you want to keep doing this?" And the reason I want to keep doing this is because we get good things done for the community, and this is such a wonderful community, and I'd love to continue serving here.
I'd like to thank the chamber and Argus for putting this on. I'd like to thank Mr. Lunibus for being our moderator tonight, and thank everyone who came out to listen. I am, I've been involved in Petaluma ever since I moved here. I was on the planning commission. I've been involved in the Petaluma Friends of Recreation. I'm a community leader. I think that I would do a good job on the council. I think I would serve the community well, and I really ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you all again. If you can't tell, I'm a political newcomer, and I find at times, politics can be extraordinarily stagnant and exhausting, and you sometimes want to just turn the other cheek. But I'm a person who, if you haven't been able to tell, I have ongoing dialogue with all of you. It's imperative that we keep the communication open, because I think we all have it pretty darn good. And what's important to me is that we're raising this community up, and we're moving ourselves forward to ensure that the next generations have something sustainable and economically viable to inherit. So thank you all for your time.
I was told earlier this week at a meeting preparing for this forum, and reminded that this is the 10th year I've been doing this. I didn't realize I'd been doing it that long. And I've seen a lot of candidates come and go. I've moderated some fairly bitter antagonistic forums. Some of you may remember. I've had to intercede and remind candidates that they had not answered the question. I want to say that I am really impressed with the six individuals at this forum. You're intelligent. You're creative. You're very articulate, and I'm going to have a hard time selecting three of them. Wish I could vote for all six of you. What I'd like to say is to all of you, only three are going to win, but I hope that the remaining three, I won't call you losers, the remaining three will continue to be active in our community, because I think we are benefiting from your treasures. Thank you very much. Give them a big...